Come to me. You don't like talking to people.
There are too many announcements. I just want to start now.
Why don't we go ahead and call our meeting to order this evening? I'd like to welcome everyone to a specially called meeting of the Georgetown City Council. Tonight's meeting is styled as a public hearing where we wish to take public comment. We wish to hear from our audience tonight. Hopefully, there'll be very little discussion from this way tonight. We're here for the purpose of hearing you all. Because this is a special called meeting and the agenda is for a public hearing, there will be no action taken by the council tonight. So we can't take action. We're not going to take action. We're here for the sole purpose of hearing from our citizens about the center of town. What I hope we learn tonight from you all is your comments about both the building on Oregon Street and also the programming that has existed at the Center of Town Building on Oregon Street. Of course, we know that the building was damaged three years ago during a storm event and a surface water flooding event. The building has set largely unused since that time. And while it's been a very difficult issue for the council to deal with, sometimes our wants for our community don't match our ability to purchase some of the things that we'd like to have. But the council has worked very hard on this issue over the last several years, and I want to compliment the council tonight for being willing to take up this issue and look at it very directly. Three years after the damage occurred to the building, we believe it's time to take your comment and for the council to reengage on the issue of the Center of Town and the programming that was once housed there. So what I would also urge everyone tonight, I see no value in a rehashing of any particular history or pointing blame about why we may be at this position after three years. We would like a productive conversation about how we go forward in the best possible way with either this building or this lot and the future of the programming that was once represented there. So with that said, the ground rules for this evening will be very few. We'd like to hear from everyone that's in the audience that wishes to speak. Several of you have signed up and we'll certainly call on you, but we're willing to stay here and listen to comment, reasonable comment, just as long as you're willing to engage us in that way. I would ask that everyone who does come before the council this evening, if you could limit your comments to four or five minutes so that everyone has an appropriate chance to speak. And if everyone could, if someone wants to come back to the podium, if you please wait until everyone else has had their opportunity, if any repeat comments or further comments are necessary. So with those very few ground rules, I'll call our public hearing to order. And the first person that has signed up on the sheet is Jason Rapp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This must be very important to me because I took my hat off. You know, I don't normally take my hat off. We're actually, I'm a board member of the Gathering Place Mission, and we were in the middle of a board meeting. We heard that Jose Baesa was going to be down here talking with you guys about a vision he has for this house. And Donna Darnell and Stephanie and I dropped everything and came out here to, first of all, offer our support for him because I can't tell you what an invaluable resource someone like Jose has been to the mission. Now, for those of you who don't know, I think most of you do know, the Gathering Place Mission is a temporary housing shelter for men dealing with any number of issues. It ranges from addiction to just being homeless to surviving violence. So it's a very important place in the community, and it really is a very unique place. And God really is working through people there. I've seen it myself. I go there on Sundays occasionally. They stupidly let me in to come in and talk. Why you let an attorney come through your doors willingly is beyond me, but they stupidly let me go and do it. But I started hearing about Jose, and I've never met Jose, but I started hearing about this young man who volunteered his time to stay overnight with the guys there to make sure that everything was safe, to make sure that they were doing what they were supposed to do. He has such a burning passion to serve, which is really what we're all called to do. His passion is to serve this community. And what he's trying to accomplish is something that I've been trying to accomplish for years. He's actually trying to tear down walls. And when we hear about tearing down walls, what we don't hear a lot of times is tearing down the walls of our specific churches, okay? What happens a lot of times in churches, and I've seen this firsthand because I've tried this in this community as well, because my heart is in the Gathering Place, is you get in touch with churches and you say, "Let's all get together and let's do something. Let's really do something special. Let's see Christ working through every single one of us and exploding outward instead of coming inward into the church doors." And that's what he's trying to accomplish because his vision for this property is something that I've experienced firsthand in a town in Ohio. It's basically what's called a house of prayer. This is not like any church that you've ever heard of before, you've ever seen before. This is a place that has people there 24 hours to help people out. When they come in, they're praying for things. There are things, places have signs dedicated for people writing prayers. "This is for my cousin who's serving overseas in Iraq." You know, "This is for my mother who's battling cancer," and there are special candles lit. It's a way for a community to really tie itself together. And in order to have that happen, what you have to have is someone who has the passion and the credibility to do that. And from the beginning, when I started hearing about Jose, I knew, once I heard what was going on down here, I had to come down and speak on his behalf. This is a person I have never met before. I've never met this man before, but I know from the stories that I've been told about him and his dedication and what he wants to do and what his vision is, and it shares the same vision that I have for places like Georgetown, is I had to come down and speak on his behalf. Because you don't hear the same things over and over again from different sources. You know, we all know the way we operate as human beings. You know, there's always that "yeah, but," or there's always that, you know, tendency to say, "Well, it's too good to be true." You know, but when you hear from four, five, six, seven, eight, nine people, the different, you know, the same thing about an individual, that's someone that you can believe in. And when I hear his vision is something to bring this community together in a way that's not being done in other places, it made me think back to a sermon I gave one time when I was talking about, right after Christmas, I was talking about, you know, "Let's not make resolutions. Let's make this be a revolution." And that's what he's wanting to do. He's wanting to start something in Georgetown. And then you start thinking, "Well, why would this ever happen in Georgetown? Well, why can't it happen in Georgetown? Why can't this be a place that is a model for other people, where we tear down these walls, where we really come together, where it's an opportunity to serve one another in a way that's not seen anywhere, where it's a way to really start something?" Because you really can't have a rainstorm without a couple of drops. And that's what he's offering. That's what he's going to come up and talk about because he puts the walk behind the talk. You know, he's the one who's staying at the Gathering Place Mission for free just to help the guys out. So all I'm here to do today is I'm here to show my support to Jose. I'm here on behalf of the Gathering Place Mission to say something like this can absolutely work. It can absolutely be real. It can be tangible, and it can make a difference.
But you have nothing to say about the Center of Town?
Well, what I would say would be, having seen one of these houses of prayer, I think it's an absolutely marvelous idea.
Maybe we can hear from Mr. Visa, is that correct?
Vazza.
I'm sorry. Please.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for the introduction. Very humbling to hear that. My name is Jose Baesa. I have been in the States for five years. I am an alumni from Georgetown College. I studied, graduated this past December with a major in business management and political science. About three months ago, I felt the call from God to come back to this city as a full-time missionary. And since then, I've been working, and this is what I'm speaking on behalf today, on this ministry call, Awaken Love, that has the support from the Gathering Place, Georgetown College, and many other businesses and individuals in town that have united, not my cause, but what we believe that the Lord is doing in Georgetown. And I just want to explain very briefly just about, I think, in order for you to know what the proposal is for the Center of Town Building, first you have to hear a little bit of the story behind it. So two years and a half ago, a few of us in Georgetown College, a couple of students, we had a burden for the city. We want to see it transform. We want to see not just the poor being reached and the homeless having a place to stay. We wanted to see, as he said, a revolution on this town. So we started to pray for the city. And we started to pray and pray and guiding. At some point, we were praying every morning at 8:00 AM. And as I said, through the years, we keep increasing. We went up and down, but more people started to join us on these prayer meetings. And I was on the Gathering Place for a few times. We had some prayer meetings there. And then the businesses, like the Upbeat Cafe and different places, they started to join, and that the Lord was putting a burden on people for this city, to see it shine, to see it be an example for all cities. I am from Chile, and I always tell my parents, "Don't understand me," but I do have a true burden for this city. I care for the city. I care for the people on this city, and I want to see the city shining on a hill for the other cities in the nation and even in the nations of the world. So this vision and mission that we're proposing for the Center of Town Building, we truly believe that this is the perfect place to have this place, we call it "house of prayer." It's a biblical term, but what it really means is a place of 24/7, day and night worship and intercession in the name of Jesus, of course, a Christian place. It's not a church. As he said, it's a, we believe, it's a corporate, it's a communal effort from the churches and the city to launch it and sustain it and to be a place in which intercedes for the city and for the nations of the earth. And of course, we believe that the city needs prayer and that we all need prayer. I know we all have situations in our lives in which we come to the time where the only act, the only thing that we can rely on is prayer. But I want to take an offensive stance in this town with the matter of prayer. And I believe that having it on the center of town is to take an offensive stand to fight against things that we don't see in the natural aspect, but they are in the spiritual active, but they impact the natural aspect of our daily lives. So we are, the people that have joined, and this is who we are, we are students. There's many people from Georgetown College involved in this that have joined from the beginning. People that don't have anything to gain from it, but they just want to give out to the community. They want to give out their energies. They're committed to it. And not just, they have students, we have homeless men that are joining this vision that have come out of the Gathering Place, not just with a place to stay, but with a burden for the city too. And different men that have joined through the ages that they're all for this purpose that is birthing on this city. And so it's already something that is happening. And we just felt around two weeks ago, and we went and prayed over the building, and they said, "This would be the perfect place." And we've been praying for it. So when we saw the advertisement on the newspaper, "Wow, this is an answer prayer." And we signed up immediately, and I immediately went and got my suit ready. I don't usually wear suits, but this is a proper occasion to use it. So we believe that not just the place is, for many reasons, the place, we have studied, I went to check it out one time with a city engineer, with Donna Darnell. We went to review the building to see how it looked. They were thinking about maybe using it for other purposes with the Gathering Place. And I saw it, and the image inside came back to my mind. The design inside is perfect to have, where we have already, we were working in this vision for a long time, and is to have a place for worship and intercession that goes day and night, which is sustained by all churches and communities. So there's different styles of prayer, and people can go and put their prayer requests, all people from the community. And then there's a place for a coffee shop or something like that, for people to hang out between prayer times. And then there's offices and meetings for the people that is operating the house of prayer. You know, it needs a lot of operational stuff, it's going to go 24/7. That's, the week has 163 hours. We need to have 84 prayer meetings, two hours each to be able to complete it. So there's a lot of effort, staff, people that need to be there full-time to be able to sustain it. Also, another reason the Center of Town is the center of Georgetown, and it's in a strategic position for many ministries and businesses involved, like Georgetown College and the Gathering Place, which have been supporting this ministry through the years. And it's an strategic position for unity and for convenience for people on the city that we believe will suit perfect to this place in the city. And yeah, and some of the reasons that we think that that place would be perfect for this, for this house of prayer. We have thought a lot, we have a 10-year vision plan that we have been working for a long time, which has a short term of keeping diligently with the prayer meetings that we're hosting right now in the city. We're praying for you, Mr. Mayor. Weekly, we're praying for the city. We're praying for prosperity. We're praying for blessing. We're praying for the Lord to touch every heart on this city. And we have a burden for that. And yeah, we just came up with this plan, we're going to keep diligently with what we're doing right now, but also we're aiming for 24/7. So we expect these meetings to increase. And I had in my plan for the building to come up in four years. So the Lord, you know, he really messed up my plans in order to be here tonight to speak to you. But I believe that if it's the time right now, we're ready for it. We are committed to it. And I think that, well, we have studied, we have, I don't want to talk too long, but we have studied financially how we're going to come up, including the $1.3 million that it needs for repairment. We believe that we can actually, we can get with this money, and more than that, we can, we believe that this is an extravagant offering that we're giving for the city. So one of our values is extravagant giving. We want to, we want to give ourselves to it, and we want to invite all the people to give extravagantly to this for the repairment and the functioning day and night that it needs to. So, and we believe, and as, we believe that this would be a really, that building needs to be used for something that would benefit the whole community, not just a part of the community. And I believe that this would truly benefit every single part of this community, and it's already doing it in a small aspect, but we want to impact the whole community. And I believe that this will. So that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Good evening. I, my name is Brian Langlins. I'm the campus minister at Georgetown College, and I'm also coming to speak in support of the proposal for a 24/7 house of prayer here in Georgetown. My sense is that, like the Gathering Place Mission, which I've been involved in since its beginning, like the Amen House, I love the way that these ministries are a unifying force and can be a unifying force here in Georgetown, where folks from different churches can be involved in a shared ministry. The Elizabeth Place is another place I've been involved with, where different folks from different congregations in different parts of town come together to do something that's excellent for town and it provides a need. And so I think there's so much potential here. I know just in conversations I've had with Donna and the leadership of the Gathering Place Mission, they're doing amazing work over there, amazing work. But I've also heard from them that the work that they're doing, it's really the tip of the iceberg, and that there are some problems that just can't be touched except by prayer. And so the idea of having folks praying nonstop here in the middle of town for, even for the issues of addiction that we see, of homelessness, of domestic violence, so much of the things that are encountered, I think would be, a trust would be a great blessing. And so I'm also excited about the potential. I know the Center of Town had programs to reach young people. Before I became the campus minister, I served in a local church as a youth pastor. So my whole life, my whole vocation has been serving young people. And so one of the things that I hope could happen as a part, an arm of this Awakened Love 24/7 house of prayer ministry would be programs of outreach that would help to reach out to young people and to provide programming there for young people in the center of town. And one of the things that I'm really excited about, just the possibility of involving students from Georgetown College over there to help with that. I teach all of the ministry classes currently that are offered at the college, and each of those have a service learning components. And so one of the things I love to do, each student who takes a ministry class with me, they have to, they get to, the main part of their grade is they get to connect with and serve with a local ministry. And so, and Jose came up through our ministry on campus. I've known him for several years. I believe in him. But just the opportunity to raise up leaders who could be involved over there, and I just see so much potential with that, and it's something that I think is needed and something that I'd be very excited about supporting. So thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Joy Harris?
Mine's really quick and simple. I am of the opinion that it should go back to the original intent and purposes that it was used for in the beginning. I think that it could be for children. It could be for the homeless. It could be for various populations. That's what it was used for in the beginning. And I think if it goes back to the original intent, it will still benefit the community.
Thank you, Joy. Sherry, can you help us with some of the programming numbers? That exhausts the list of folks who had signed to speak. Others may speak, but I've also asked Sherry from our Parks and Recreation Department to review with us some of the programming numbers from before, where some of the programming may have shifted, and what those needs look like today as best as we can figure. That may prompt other comments from our audience as well.
When the mayor approached me to do this, we were more than happy to be involved. And what I've done is I've gone back and pulled like the attendance records for the past two years that we were open. So in the year of 2010, for example, we had a total attendance of 25,022 participants at the Center of Town. They participated in clogging. We had the open game room usage area where they could just come in at any time and have a place to go and have somewhere to hang out and use that area. We had a karate program. We did a lot of our departmental training there, as well as NISCAC certification, which is where we used to, we still do it, we've just had to relocate it, train all of our youth sports volunteer coaches and those kinds of things. So every baseball coach and softball coach that you see out there, they have to go through this training before they're an official volunteer of our department. We had aerobics there. We did some things like jazzercise and some things of that nature. We had some really strong kids programs there. We had the Fun Express, which is basically the kids program that we would use during spring breaks, during snow days and things of that nature. And then we had Kids World, which was our summer day camp. And although we still have those programs in play, the loss of the Center of Town has greatly decreased the number of participants we can have in that program. So yes, we do still have those programs. They are now based out of the pavilion. Obviously, with the loss of the Center of Town, we did lose the ability to service as many people with those. Parents Night Out was a big program for us. It was a night when, you know, they could just drop the kids off, and we'd have all kinds of activities for them, and the parents could just go do Have Date Night or whatever, shopping or whatever they wanted to do. We had several rental programs. We had a checkpoint program. We had several other private. We were doing weddings and all kinds of functions like that, baby showers. We had rentals almost every weekend. We did Seniors Day out there once a month, where the seniors from the senior citizens would come down, and we'd feed them and play games and do those kind of things. And Senior Stretch as well, where we do some exercise programs with and stuff. One of the other big things that we did at the Center of Town was, we partnered with the library and put on plays for the community, and that is something that we have completely lost the ability to do without the Center of Town. We do do other programs with the library now. We focus on reading programs, and we take, have moved some of that to Ed Davis. So we have been able to accommodate that. But, you know, the main loss there was with the plays and things of that nature that we did. It was a really busy little center. You know, 2011, we had a total visits of 29,297. A lot of times, people would drive by there and not necessarily see what was going on from the outside, but it was always a very, you know, popular center. Now, that being said, we have had the opportunity to reevaluate our programming. Obviously, it's been three years, and we have had to do that. Some programming was lost because we just didn't have somewhere else to fit it in. We lost our karate program. We lost our clogging program. You know, the rentals, those things had to go by the wayside because obviously we don't have them. We lost our monthly dances that we did for the kids and some things of that nature. But we also were able to save our biggest program, which is Kids World, our summer day camp. We were able to save Fun Express and those kind of programs that really reach out into the community and brought a lot of people in. We do, still do NISCAC. We just divide it between the pavilion and Ed Davis now. So we have rearranged as many of the programs as we possibly can. And then there's just some programs that the Center of Town had space for that no other place has. The dance floor made a few of those programs a little easier for us to do, and we don't really have that space. But within the past three years, I think we've done a pretty good job overall of focusing on making sure that the programs that were there that were unique, trying to continue those and putting them in other spaces. You know, the Center of Town is where we all got our start. We led the Center of Town. But on the other hand, the Center of Town has not stopped us from programming and doing our job without having the Center of Town, so. Any questions in particular? Any numbers, anything like that? I do have that information here if you would like to see it. You know, as far as the continuing program numbers, those numbers have been absorbed into either the Ed Davis programming numbers or the pavilion numbers at this time. So I don't have those in particular, but if you would ask for those, I could go back and pull and see what we're still doing that was there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there others that would like to speak this evening? Yes, ma'am. Please come out.
I'm Ruby Harris, and I've thought real long and hard about the Center of Town. I think three years ago, the ball was dropped with the Center of Town. I think what happened with the Center of Town, first the ball being dropped, is people got too greedy and they did, didn't realize what they had, and they forgot about the kids. And I think something needs to go back down there that's going to benefit the low-income kids. I love all kids, but all kids can't pay to go anywhere. They can't pay to go to the pavilion. I think we need to do something that's, if you're going to put anything out there at all, it needs to be something that's going to benefit the, all the kids from downtown. Because there was a lot of the kids that came from downtown. There's nowhere in Georgetown for kids really to go other than the pavilion. Well, all kids can't go to the pavilion. They don't have the money to go. I'd like to see us do something for kids. And the other flip side of that is, is I also volunteer for the Gathering Place. And there's a part of me that thinks we need to look at that also. We need to look at something that's going to benefit homeless women and homeless children. Because we do have them in Georgetown. Well, we want to make like we don't have them, but we do. But we do have them because there are some nights when we're at that center, at the Gathering Place, we feed 50-some people, and a lot of those feed 50-some people and a lot of those are children. So, I think we need to really think about what we're going to do with that building. I like to see us do something that's going to benefit kids, but I also want us to benefit kids that don't have the money to do some of the things that some of the other kids in the town to do, can do. Because I think when you don't have a place for kids to go, is he still saying, officer standing over there? Then that's what happens with our kids when we don't have anywhere for them to go. They get into stuff because they have nothing to do. And Georgetown, other than the pavilion, has nothing, as far as I'm concerned, that's for the kids to do and for them to meet and get together and socialize and do things together. And I think we need to look at that. So, I think over the years, we just dropped, the ball was dropped. I think people were fighting for the center of town, but then they started looking at what else they could do, how much more money they could get and build something so much bigger that they forgot about what the purpose of. It was for kids and all the senior citizens and different weddings and different stuff that used to come down there. So, I think we need to stop and really look at it and decide what we're going to do. If I had to flip, I couldn't even choose, I really couldn't, because I know what the Gathering Place does and I know what the kids, I know what the kids need. I'll take that back. I'm always going to be for the kids, I don't care what's going on. But I also agree with him, we do need somewhere to go, we do need prayer. Georgetown needs prayer, the whole world needs prayer. But I would like for you all to really look at it, really consider what needs to be done and what's going to benefit the kids who don't have and can't go walk out to the pavilion or can't go to the pool because they don't have money, can't be in the summer program because they don't have enough money. You can only do so many scholarships, it won't catch all the kids. But there's other stuff you can do that don't require scholarships and just help kids. It's not written somewhere that we, after, everything we do, we have to chart somebody. Do it from the goodness of your heart. Do it because that's what you're supposed to be doing. If you're a true curious, then we're supposed to be looking out for children, not just stuffing them on the side and say, oh, well, they'll be okay. So, I'm through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruby. Haley.
Can I add something real quick?
Mr. Mayor, Council? I didn't come to speak, but I've been sitting back and listening, thinking. My name is Haley Conway, I'm chairman of the Scott County Board of Education. Lived here all my life, so has my wife. Georgetown has grown, Georgetown has changed. The center of town, to me, and I'm not going to sit here, my two cents worth is not about whether it should be this or that. I think what I am concerned about is that our schools right now have getting close to 10,000 kids. And think about that, we'll probably hit that mark within the next two to three years. That's more than the city of Georgetown had 30 years ago. And that's just how many kids we've got. I'm going to sit here and tell you as a person who's on the Board of Education that we have drugs in our community. All the things that you see in the Lexington paper that are happening in a larger community 12 miles down the road are happening here, just not to that extent. You know, education, the Board of Education in Scott County has increased the amount of athletic programs. I think, if I'm not mistaken, we're now 23 different athletic programs in our school district. Some people would say because people in Scott County are obsessed with sports, it's a win-at-all-cost mentality. I'd like to think that we are in the business to educate our children, but athletics engage them. And whatever we can do to get them to come to school is why we should be in business. You know, you hear it, I remember, you know, I'll be 60 years old in November and I can't believe I'll be 60 years old in November, it's like it's flown, I don't know where it went. I used to hear the older people talk about things and I'd say, oh, yeah, you know, yeah, that doesn't apply to me. Well, it does apply to me because we are educating the next generation, we are raising the next generation. I look out and I see single-parent households now. Ms. Harris, I actually coached one of her children a number of years ago. I coached youth sports in Scott County for 25 years before I decided to run for the Board of Education. And I remember a lot of those kids, I would take after practice, I didn't know where they were going to go, I would take them to center of town. And that's where they would go as a place till someone came to take them home, wherever home would be. And I'm going to tell you, some of those children, I was worried. I'll be honest with you, I had no idea what they were going to walk into. I felt like the only decent thing they had was playing in an organized athletic league, using that time for some structure, for learning, for gamesmanship, to learn how to deal with other people and to have a social entity that they could be a part of something. I'm not going to say whether you should, that old concrete block building down there should be kept for this or that, that's not the intent. My concern is that you keep the programming. And Tom, when you and I were growing up, Georgetown was small enough that everyone could walk to Suffoliate Park, go swim. You can't walk to the new pool, it's not accessible to everybody. Not everyone can walk to pavilion, it's a wonderful facility. But this place down here, whether you choose to use it for this, and it's not my place to say it should be used for this or that, but you should try to find someplace within Georgetown proper for these kids to go to. Because as of right now, there's not much here. You know, we have a movie theater now that they can go to movies on Friday, Saturday night. We had Glenn Theater when we were kids, then that closed down. I remember back when we were little, they used to have Kids' Day on a Saturday, once a year in the summertime, big day for kids in Georgetown. I remember as a kid, they used to block off Clinton Hill when it snowed, as far as we had the state-of-the-art snow removal equipment. And they would have the barrels down there and they would have fires and we all slid down Clinton Hill, some of them actually made it up into South Broadway. But still, there were things for kids to do. I'm not seeing, I'm not sure there's a whole lot for kids to do now other than go home and do this. And you know what I mean when I say do this, it's the most unsocial entity I've seen. 20 years ago, you used to drive through Georgetown, you see kids playing baseball in the summertime in vacant lots. When was the last time you drove through Georgetown and saw kids playing baseball in a vacant lot? I always did see kids though at the center of town. And like I said, it is not my place as a citizen of Georgetown or Scott County or someone that's lived here to tell the city council what they should do with their dollars. You all are stewards of the public trust, you're going to make the best judgments, I feel very confident in that. But I would keep the mission of helping kids and offering as many programs as possible because honestly, there's a battle going on for our kids right now. And I'm telling you, drugs are rampant in our community, there's other things that are attacking our kids in different ways. And to some of those kids, that may be the last resort. So, as I'm saying, you know, this Board of Education, trust me, we've got our issues now with regards to space-time, what it is we're trying to do with our money. I know you guys are having to fight the same battles. You can only make the best decisions possible and try to do what helps the most, but I would try, if at all possible, to keep what it was you used to do down there. I mean, I'll be in that building, maybe somewhere else, but I'd keep it in downtown Georgetown proper because there's a lot of kids in Georgetown proper that need those services and can't get them anywhere else and don't have the access to go there. It's just a thought. And like I said, I didn't mean to talk, I'll get, I'll hear about it when I get home.
Yes, sir. If we could, why don't we cycle through and make sure no one else?
That's fine, I didn't think anybody else was...
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm sure none of you have seen me before, my name is Talena Young.
I'm sorry, your name again, ma'am?
Talena Young. I personally came up here from, I wasn't planning on coming here, I probably got a religious problem here, I guess it was God. But I came up here simply because I heard all three of the people speak about the prayers, House of Prayer, Checkpoint, and I just know how it was for me as a kid. I grew up in an urban city with no money, almost, and we had a recreation center, something like Checkpoint, that helped me get out of situations that I was in. I've had several friends, they closed our recreation center and I just know what it led for me and where it led for me and my friends. I had a lot of friends end up in jail, plenty of them are dead and some of them have overdosed on drugs and just got into a lot of things they shouldn't have gotten into, but I know what the program did for us. We had plenty of things going on, we had a prayer service, we had games, we had youth mentor programs come and help us out and that really just kept us out of the streets. And like she said before, the officers, they got to know more about our kids than some of our parents did. There was homework helpers there and I know my mom didn't have the time to help me with homework and just a lot of things to go on that some parents just can't seem to do at home for the kids that don't have the money to go to the pavilion or to the other centers. I know that my recreation that was in the center of town where I could walk to without help of an adult, that helped me get where I needed to be in life. So, I just wanted to put my two cents in and I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Kitty, did you want to speak?
Oh, you think they can't hear me? I'm like Mr. Conway, I didn't come to speak, I was here at a meeting before this. But having worked with lots of children that were served by the center of town when I was teaching at Garth, it's a huge asset. So, regardless of what building you put it in, regardless of how it's done, I'm not so certain that both of these ministries couldn't work together. But there really isn't a lot of things, if you're a child that's obviously not old enough to drive or perhaps your parents are working and you have to be home alone, I would much rather than be at the center of town than they are by themselves somewhere else. The checkpoint program was wonderful. Ms. Ruby was not a babysitter, she was an educator and she probably wouldn't say that, but that's what she did. So, I think it's really important and I think it's important for our community. So, I hope we come to some agreement that something is downtown, that the children who cannot walk to the pavilion, they don't have the funds to be at some of the programs we offer. There's, I sat on the board at the Y for a while and we don't have enough places to implement those programs as well. So, I think we need to think about what we want to do for all those children they'll live with in our downtown. So, that's all.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you all for hosting this meeting. My name is Nathaniel Price and I'm a lifelong Scott Countyan. Some of you probably had my dad cut your hair once upon a time. And/or my mom make your drapes or something. Kitty knows my mom from PTA back in the day. But I am a pastor here in town and a philanthropist, leader and community caring person and I really have a, just a brief comment, and then I don't know if I could pose a question and I apologize for my ignorance, but my comment would be just to, yes. And, you know, there are communities out there that have found a ways to have centers of health, so to speak, for communities where everything from social entrepreneur options to nonprofits, to church entities, to et cetera, et cetera, have been able to find a way to meet under a single hub to commune together, to work together. And I think that is a great thing. And I have worked with Jose and I would echo all the affirmation about him and what the Harrises have spoken, I agree with all that and what Mr. Conway said again, I affirm all that as, both as a pastor, as a parent, as someone who cares. My question is, and I apologize for my ignorance, is I only know what I've read in the paper, is there any way we could get like a status, so to speak, for maybe some of us like me who are ignorant as to the reality of what the building is now, what the cost base is to even have it be livable, usable, what maybe the city is feeling is its options? I don't know if that's too much to ask and I apologize for my ignorance, but I'm just, that was maybe one thing I was hoping to hear tonight. What is, what is the physical reality, the financial reality, the burdens that are upon it, which may shape even some other people's ability to engage it? Thank you for your time.
Briefly, Nathaniel, the the condition and the usability of the building is, has been a difficult question for the council to answer over the last three years. Council's gotten different information at different times. The numbers that we think are the most reliable now were generated some time ago. And those numbers roughly were that to put the building back in the condition it was prior to the storm was around $500,000. To bring the building up to code with the bathrooms, the electrical systems, the HVAC, it would require more than a million dollars. City has no preferred option at this point. Our financial reality is that we are in the first year of a 10-year incentive package for the Lexus plant addition. That's going to cost us $2.5 million out of the budget for the upcoming budget year. And that phenomena will occur for each of the next four years. So, the council is wrestling with substantial reduction in income. And I would think that the last engineering I report was a couple of years old and it pointed out that the longer the building sat unoccupied, the higher those costs were going to be. The $500,000 to bring the building up simply to its pre-storm condition and the in excess of $1 million to bring it up to code to today's standards, I can only assume that those numbers would be higher today than they were when these reports were generated. Now, again, we want to hear mainly from the audience, I didn't, I didn't want us to delve into too many presentations, but I did want to frame that much of a reality for you since you asked. Yes, sir. Anyone else like to address the council at this time?
There's something I just wanted to add.
Yes, sir. Well, the folks at home would love for you to be.
They don't need to see anymore of me.
Got your hat off still, see?
I know, I'm being fancy today. Look, any day I'm not wearing a suit is a good day for me. A lot of times, we get trapped into fixed thinking as people and it can definitely be, I mean, Ms. Harris started to say it, this can be something, and our school board member said it, this can be something that's so much bigger. I'm here to tell you, I do a lot of criminal law and I do a lot of family law, so I see a lot in the people's personal lives. There are 12-year-olds who are injecting under their tongue so their parents don't see it or into their eyelids so their parents don't see it. It's a reality that knows no socioeconomic basis, it really is getting younger and younger. I'm tied into Salvation Armies all over because there's so many people who can't afford to go places and Salvation Armies are free. And we send them up there and we've got some ties in with them. This, it is a very legitimate problem. However, what we've been doing for so long is we've been looking at it in the world of the perishable. And what Jose is talking about doing is offering the world of the eternal. And I see this as something that could happen jointly. It could absolutely happen jointly. Ms. Harris started talking about, other people were talking about it, it doesn't need to be a this or that type situation. And it absolutely can be something that happens great if we look at it a bit differently. There's a guy who presented at a TED conference not too long ago and he came up with this idea, he called it the golden circle. And what he did, and if I had a board, I could show you, it's three circles, a small one in the center, then a bigger one, then a bigger one, just think of it like a typical bullseye. And what he did was, he explained that the outer circle is known as the what. And the what drives a lot of companies, but it's the reason a lot of companies are not successful, they just focus on the what. The middle circle is known, or the second circle is known as the how. And the inner circle is known as the why. Brilliant companies like Apple work from the why out. And not-so-successful companies work from the what in. So, if we focus on why we first want to do this with this house, I think you guys will come to the right conclusion, what to do with the money, what to do with the center of town. And that's what I'm proposing, is that we focus on the why. Why are we doing this? We want a better community. And then, we focus on how. And the how to do it, I think is definitely a combined effort. It doesn't need to be a this or that because you have people with different passions coming from different backgrounds. And that's really what we're talking about doing here. And I really think it could be something that's very, very special if you combine those two things. And I encourage you all to look at that TED thing because it's just absolutely unbelievably mind-blowing.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I forgot that last time too.
Anyone else wish to speak that hasn't spoken yet?
Anyone else wish to speak that hasn't spoken yet? Ab, Jose?
There's something I would like to add. We, I, I share a lot, the burden for the children on this town is, it's one of my passions, and it hurts my heart to see all that's going related to the drug abuse and the alcohol, not just in poor children, but even in the, in all places in the city. I think it's a, it's a, it's a real problem that we, we need to all be concerned about. And I've through my years here doing ministry, and I'm also, teach a lot of tennis in this, in this town, I'm, that's why I originally came to Georgetown to be, I played on the tennis team my whole, four, four years. And what I've seen with, regarding students, I truly believe a place of connection is important. But what, what I've seen is that what kids truly need, and what they desperately need, is, is they need role models. They need people that is, that is young, the youth that can, can show them a way, that they can admire, like, and they would follow in them, but lead them in a way which won't be too bad. So what I, what I was, what I was thinking when they were speaking, and that's just related to the center of town and the location, is that the center of town is, is, is at the middle of, I think in a, in a right on the middle of a low-income area where I've seen a lot of children on the street, I've played with many of them. And then, there comes this more wealthy area, you got Georgetown College, and and I think that what I've seen, you know, in the, in the late days, is that people coming from Georgetown College, for example, to the guiding place, and that place of connection and encounter, that I see many kids acquiring these role models out of the Georgetown College, and seeing them, and liking them, and trying to be like them. And I, I just have seen a lot of fruit and a lot of transformation on kids just by that, just by them having role models, and I truly believe that through this, that there is a way for working together and, and getting the role models connected with those who are looking for somebody to admire and, and to follow together, connected. And, well, I, I, my role model is Jesus Christ, I think he was, he did a pretty good job of that. And, but the, the key challenge is to, is somebody that can follow Jesus Christ and actually enjoy it. Because many ones follow Jesus and they're not enjoying it. But, but, but that's the biggest challenge, is somebody that can follow Jesus Christ, which everybody, even non-Christians can agree, that he did a pretty good job of being a role model. But who can follow Jesus Christ and enjoy it? That, that's, that's what I believe, that's one of our biggest challenges. As youth and as students of Georgetown College, which there are many of us engaging, is that we want to be role models for the generation that's coming, not just the little children, but also the high schools. Go to them, and we have spoken in their high schools, and we have just shared our stories, it's not, what happened to us, and how we are in the, where we are right now by the grace of God, and and we have seen change, we have seen, not just change, outward change, then, but we have seen what is more important, and I believe no man can do, there is a change from the inside out on the hearts. Kids with new desires, kids wanting to love other people, kids wanting to step out of their comfort zone and serve the community. And this is what I mean, for, I mean, for a heart level, so I think there is a way that these two proposals that have been mentioned today could work really well together. And that's something I learned. I will for sure pray, we'll be praying all day.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I wasn't going to say anything, but my name is Broson Harris. The center of town, I started going there when I was like four, five. And I remember when Brad used to run it way back when. And through the years, I came through, yeah, your old Brad. I came through Park Street, and I ended up working for Ms. Allen and Ms. Sherry when I was 14. Do the summer programs, and I started doing other things. I ended up working for my grandmother at Checkpoint. And I just feel like the, everything, I'm kind of echoing what everybody else has said, but everything that they've said, I think it can all work, but something has to be there for the community. There are kids that I started watching when I was like four, when they were four. They're, you know, in high school now, there's other kids that have graduated college, they have kids, you know, we still get invitations to weddings and graduations and all of this because it made an impact. I know for me, Ms. Allen and Ms. Sherry, my grandmother, all being at the center of town, they made an impact on me, they pushed me to do more. When I started working for Ms. Allen, I was 14. You don't get many jobs when you're 14, but I started working when I was 14, she pushed you to do more. Ms. Sherry, she would push you to do more. If you didn't do this, why did you do this? Do this, they pushed you to do more. So my grandmother, the same way, there's kids, it always was about the kids and the community. And people see me now, because they know I worked for Park Street for like 10 years, so people see me and they're like, "Hey, what's going on with the center?" And I say, "I have no idea." And they'll say, "You know, that was a great place for me when I was a kid, I remember going to the dance down there." And they'll say, "Ms. Allen, she's still there? Um, what about the lady, she had the red hair?" And I'm like, "You're talking about Sherry?" And they're like, "Yeah." And they're like, "Your grandmother?" And I was like, "Yeah, they're, they're all still around." So it made an impact. So, you know, the other things that people have said, it will work if we put our minds together, you know, and get back to the basics, because I feel is you have to teach your children, because they're leading tomorrow, and you have to take care of your older ones because they paved the way. So you have to make sure that you lay a solid foundation, because if there's not a solid foundation to build on, then it's just going to sink. And I think Steve Harvey says it like this, you give kids a bag, and throughout their life, you deposit into the bag. And when they get older, they pull out of the bag what you deposited. So if we don't deposit anything into the bag, they don't have anything to pull out.
Good job.
Thank you.
That was awesome.
Any other comments from the audience this evening?
I was going to say, I'm Crystal Lopez, I wasn't planning to but I don't know, I just, I just feel that I need to talk. Hi, Mr. Major, first of all, sorry for not saying hi. I, I was hearing just the different stories, and I was in my heart, like, just thinking, how, how true is this, like, how we need guidance in our, in our, in our from, from a young age, we need, we need somebody to follow, we need people that are guiding us through, in a, in a good way, and to live a good life. And I was thinking, like, just the difference maybe that these two ministries are do, two things that will be in, in the center of town, and I was thinking the what, what the difference about having activities and having I think a prayer life, where we're leading kids into, into somebody to follow than activities to have. And I think when you combine those two together, when you have the guidance of, the spiritual life, and people that are keeping them in a, in a safe area, I think those two combined together could be a, a very good thing to have. For me, in my experience, in my young age, what kept me from doing bad stuff and behaving, it wasn't activities. For me, having having God in, in my life was something that brought me to, to admire this person, like Jesus, I wanted to follow him. I wanted to be like him. And I think, in, in one, I mean, this, I think when we think in, in the center of town, and we, and think of these activities that we will have, I think is that, that is like kind of a bubble. In one point, they're going to come out of that bubble. And what, what are they going to have? What kind of activities are they going to have outside that bubble? I think when you, you give them a spiritual guidance to a person that is eternal, that is always going to be there, is going to guide them to live a life with, with somebody to follow, instead of an activity that keeps them busy of not doing other stuff. And I'm not saying that the, having good activities is, is bad, is good, but I think when we combine these two together, it could be something much, much better. So that's why I support the two ideas that they brought today. I think it will be incredible to see kids following, following this Jesus, you know, that had, is an amazing example for, 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 for everybody. And also to, to give them, like, give them activities to bring the fund, you know, to the, to the city. So both of them are incredible. But I think an activity is not something that is going to sustain them, you know? I think following a person, following an example of life will keep them for the rest of their life, you know, in a right path, instead of an activity. So I'm saying that the two together, I think they're combined, it could, it could guide our kids, guide the community to live better lives, you know? It's not, I, I don't think it's about the activity itself, but it's having a leader and being guided, you know, through fun activities. So we can, I, I was thinking, like, maybe the prayer, this prayer, House of Prayer could have activities for the kids in the same building, you know? Or invite even the kids to, to pray, you know? We, we don't, we don't take, sometimes we, we don't think kids, kids should pray, they should be playing all the time. But I think kids, they can pray too, and even Jesus like said, "Let, let the kids come to me." And I think, I think we should keep them involved. And if they get involved, they will be like, "I love Jesus, I love this guy, I, I want to be like him, I don't want to get involved in this other stuff, that stuff." So I think it will be a good opportunity to bring the kids together, to give them an activity to do, like prayer, or just having fun in another room, you know, in, in the center of town. And, I don't know, just one of my, my thoughts today, but thank you for letting me speak. And sorry for my language, I'm from Chile.
Any further comments? Thank you all very much for coming out this evening and sharing your thoughts with the city council. Again, I do I do compliment the city council for their willingness to pick up this issue after three long years, consider the current realities that, that were, with which we're faced. And your all's input will be very helpful with that process. Thank you all very much. If there are no further comments, we will stand adjourned.